Alrighty, I want to thank everybody for coming to the Special City Council Meeting for June 6, 2023. Roll call tonight, we have Counselor at Large Worthley for legal language in the interest of the government and transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council in accordance to open meeting law. Since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio. It will be conducted by remote participation vote. If you are calling on a phone, you can press star nine to request or speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there's a raise hand button that you can tap to press the request to speak. Please use either of these options during the oral communications to be recognized to speak. It is defined in the city Gloucester that no individuals should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of the age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender, identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. So my next step is to change my view to present who's here. We have Joanne Sinos, our clerk. Counselor at Large Jason Grow, Counselor at Large Jeff Worthley, Counsel for Ward One Scott Memhard, Counsel Large Jamie O'Hara, Counsel Large Tony Gross, Counsel for Ward Two Tracy Neal, Counselor Majota for Counselor Three, and also myself for Counselor Five. We have our CFO John Dunn. We have a CAO Jill Cahill. And I believe that's what I can see right now. If there's any corrections, please let me know. Excellent. So that being that-
Do you want to turn your camera on?
If you really want to see me, here I am. So our next order of business, Madam Clerk.
So Sean, do you want to announce that there are no oral communications at Special City Council meetings?
That would be what I was looking for. Thank you very much.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda would be the consent agenda?
Excellent. Is there any problems with the consent agenda or anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Counselor Gross.
Yeah, the letter is on the consent agenda, correct?
Yes, it is.
It's for council vote next on the June 13th meeting.
I was, um, I think it should contain all the counselors' signatures.
Okay.
I as well. There's two letters. There's one for the representatives, one for the Senate.
You had it going out under just President Val Gilman's signature only.
Okay.
We can, we can change that by council vote right now to do it for all counselors. I'd like to make a motion that-
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded that all councils will sign the memorandum to the state for the free lunch program. And this will be by roll call, I guess. And tonight, starting the roll call is Counsel Worthley.
You're on mute.
It's the first time this happened this year. Sorry. The answer is yes.
Alright. If we can go in order, because I actually don't have the order in front of me. But we all should know it, and I should have done this before I did this. So the next counselor.
Do you want me to do roll call for you?
If you could, that'd be excellent, Joanne.
So Counsel Worthley said yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara? You muted, Counsel O'Hara? I guess he's got a thumbs up and Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Okay, Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
And Counsel Gilman is absent, so the motion passes eight in favor, one absent. Okay, so now we're going back to the consent agenda is amended. So we have a motion on that.
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, so Counsel President Nolan, would you like me to do the roll call?
Please do.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman is absent. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
And Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
The consent agenda has passed as eight in favor, zero opposed and one absent. The next item on the agenda is the scheduled public hearing, Public Hearing 2023-028. The public hearing on FY proposed budget is the FY24 Mayor's Recommended Budget.
Excellent. I would like for everybody to know that Counsel Worthley will be the roll call starter and in charge of the 30 seconds. Counsel Worthley, you ready to accept that?
Ready.
Excellent. So I will open the public hearing. And we'll start that with those speaking in favor, and I see that Jill Cahill has her hand up. Jill would like to speak tonight.
Counsel President Nolan, through you to the members. I just, I'm here on behalf of Mayor Berga, asking for your support of the FY24 budget proposal. I want to thank John Dunn, who did not have his usual sidekick in this process this year. So he had a little extra work on his hands, and we had incredible support from our department heads and their teams to deliver a level service budget. I think they are important strategic investments that we were able to make with this budget while being very full of rising inflation and really making sure this was a sensible budget and being within our limits. Some of that viewed in the last phase of BNF meetings, thank you Memhard for navigating those and all the members. As we've seen at the state level, a record increase in Chapter 70 spending, which is reflected in our record investment in Gloucester Public Schools very closely with Superintendent and School Committee Chairwoman Clancy. So we're thrilled to highlight that as well as maintaining the increase in the paving budget, something we hear about every week on City Council. And we were also able to maintain our community health navigator position, which most of you know as Tito, through a strategic investment in our opiate settlement funding. So those are just a few of the highlights. Again, very mindful of the long-term effects of rising inflation on all of our taxpayers. And we ask for your support with the budget. Thanks so much.
Excellent. Thank you, Jill Cahill. At this point, I'd like to ask if there's anybody else that wants to speak in favor of the budget? Alright.
President-
We do have-
Is it three minutes for every speaker?
It's three minutes for each speaker, and we do have, the first speaker would be Jane Fox-Dobson, if we could bring her in.
If it's okay, I'll set an alarm for two minutes and 45 seconds, and then that'll be enough time to hopefully have someone wrap up what they're saying.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counsel Nolan, the interim mayor Val Gilman has joined the meeting.
Excellent. So the interim mayor is, is it on hand? Thank you. So if we could bring in Jane Fox-Dobson?
Great, she's on.
How you doing tonight, Jane? You have three minutes.
Need some mute herself.
Jane, you're muted?
I had, no, I had, I raised my hand because I had a question as to when you could speak. Does this have to do with the voting machines as well and the grease traps, or is this just an overall budget?
Um, the grease traps were on a consent agenda that went to committee. This is on the overall budget.
Okay, so I can speak on the overall budget on what I, what I think, or I'm just a little confused as when you can speak.
Well, your, your time is counting, so you can speak on the overall budget.
Alright, my husband's here, so I'm going to speak for him as well. This is what I have my concerns. I'm going to start now. Thank you for allowing me to voice my opinion. I favor voting polls that are honest and voting machines that are accurate. I also support the education of our youth, both financially and morally. Voting and education are the future of this city as well as this country. With all due respect, I am baffled at the proposal to spend $75,000 on new voting machines. I believe there is nothing wrong with the current ones, which are accurate and precise when it comes to-
Jane, I gotta stop you. I gotta stop you on part of this. The voting machines are not part of what we're on. The voting machines have been sent to committee for a future meeting. We're talking about the actual mayor's proposal for the budget. So the voting machines and the grease trap is not part of what's, what we're, what's in front of us.
Okay, that's what I had asked. That's why I was asking, because that's what I wanted to talk about.
But please carry on. Any questions on the budget?
No, I'm all set then.
Alright, thank you, Jane. Next up, we have, uh, looking at the list. We have Peg Russell, if we can bring Peg in to vote, to speak in favor or against the mayor's proposed budget.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, Peg. How you doing tonight?
Great, terrific. And I just want to thank a group of the counselors who got back to me on my budget matter. But specifically, I want to speak in support of the budget for, you know, the city as, as discussed. And just bring up another aspect of budget for downtown businesses, retailers, et cetera. It's a little sideways of the conversation, but it's very pertinent. For the last week, we have had heavy equipment and star, et cetera, on the street parked in front of our businesses. And there was absolutely virtually none, no communication from the city or these utility companies to the retailers, restaurants, et cetera, for this massive interruption to our businesses.
Peg, I, I, I have to stop you on that. Um, did receive your phone call at 9:15 last night. The city is aware, they're working with National Grid. This is about the mayor's proposed budget matter. It's not about National Grid or construction. And as much as I feel for you, and I support my local now businesses, I can't let you go forward on this unless you're going to bring up a specific budget matter that's in front of us.
I support the budget that's in front of you. And as a constituent, both from a residential and retail slash business owner on Main Street, I can support monies allocated for all budget matters. But specifically, when it comes to individual budgets and personal businesses, et cetera, during the 400 and during the peak season of, that's currently going on, to have this kind of work being done. And I understand from speaking with several counselors, in addition to getting a message today. As a matter of fact, I spoke to Valerie Gilman. She came and visited me today. I've spoken to Jamie O'Hara and to Tracy O'Neill. Pam totally got back-
So I, I, I am going to stop you, and I don't like doing this. It's not who I am. But it's not, we, we all know your concerns, and we're all working them. Other councils have reached out to National Grid personally. We've, we've worked, worked and reached out to the mayor and the administration. We don't like what's going on, but that's not what's in front of us tonight. So I'm going to have to ask you to stop on that. And if you have a question about the actual budget, you can ask that, and we'll allow it. If not, this will move on quite quickly to a regular council meeting. And I do understand your concerns, believe me, I give.
I will forward those messages and clarification. I did receive word from Toby today that they are planning on coming back in July. And I really preemptively want to say that is the worst possible time. So I believe with that, thank you very much for recognizing. I just again, got such great response from the various counselors I spoke to, Ms. Gilman, Jamie O'Hara, Tracy O'Neill, all of the people I sent messages to. I really thank you for your time and appreciate it.
Not a problem. Have a great night. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Larry Russo. Larry Russo, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yep. My presentation tonight was going to be on Rust Island fire protection, but I sensed that would be out of order.
Uh, Larry, yes, it would be. This is something we are working hard for, but tonight is the budget, in the budget only. So I do appreciate you calling in and look forward to working with you forward on this because this is something very important to all of us. But tonight is-
Thank you. I'll jump in. I'll jump in. I'll jump in on the next council meeting in two weeks.
I, I take exception. I think we, you know, we don't know what these people are going to be speaking of. They're our constituents. They, I'm sure they're talking about whether it's a budget of, of whatever Mr. Russo wanted to speak about dealing with Rust Island or Ms. Dobson speaking of whatever she wanted. I'm sure it's focused on budget. Everything's budget related. This is, this is the, the budget that everything funds off of. So I, I, I think it's not being fair in cutting these people off.
Alright, um, I, I believe that we have a budget matter in front of us. There's been a point of order called from Counsel O'Hara, and I understand where he's going with this. But we do have a gender in front of us, and we have a lot of personal situations going on that are not budget related and more administrative and work-related situations. So if someone would like to roll this, that's fine. But I, I believe that we need to stick to what's in front of us. And every one of these matters is something that's important to all of us. But they don't justify what's going on in front of us for the mayor's budget proposal.
Ask a question?
Counsel O'Neill?
Um, how are these people supposed to know if there's money in the budget to fix their water situation? If they can't ask that question, if they can't question the budget? How are they supposed to know that Main Street is going to be repaired? And when and how? And how much? Isn't that an issue of the budget? How much is it going to cost to repave Main Street? And when's it going to happen? Because Main Street is a disaster, quite honestly. It's, it's, it's shameful if you haven't driven down there.
Uh, Counsel O'Neill, I, I would say that what's going on in Main Street is, is natural gas lines. It's being done by National Grid. It's private. Um, it's not a budget matter. Uh, it's something that is happening, that they're doing to restore things. So I, I don't see that fall in the budget as far as water lines. Um, that's enterprise fund, and that's something that's not in front of us tonight on when we're going to get a project done to Counsel O'Hara's report. Um, so I, I don't like being this person, but that's who I have to be tonight and follow the strict rules of what is in front of us. And what's in front of us is the proposed budget from the mayor's office. Um, but National Grid working on Main Street, is National Grid working on Main Street? And that's their own priority. They have rights and access and easements to their own lines.
And National Grid is responsible for repaving curb to curb?
Uh, National Grid is responsible for doing what the city asked them to do, which again is not a budgetary item that's in front of us tonight.
Counsel Nolan, I'd, I'd like to speak again back to Mr. Russo asking about fire protection on Rust Island. That, that's, that's clearly fire protection is in the budget. That's fire department. Um, I, I think we're, we're being short-sighted and not allowing these, these constituents to say their piece.
I think that-
We typically, we typically have budgets that no one says anything. I mean, we're, we're signing off on $150 million plus or minus, and people are willing to talk. Let them talk.
Alright, we need to step aside, Counsel O'Hara. I have Counsel Gross, Grow with his hand up. It will speak for Counsel Grow. He hasn't spoken yet.
I think, I think we can, we can resolve this very quickly. Mr. Russo, is there an issue in the budget you would like to address regarding potential funding for your water repair project?
Yes, I can abbreviate my comments by simply stating this. I want to have the DPW create a master plan of city water projects and rank them by priority based on fire safety. And then
We lost-
Water feasibility study to install actions on Rust Island. End of comment.
And I'm assuming you, you would like to see that funded in the budget?
Absolutely.
Okay, I think we solved the problem there. Thank you very much for-
Mr. Russo, Mr. Russo, I lost some of what you said.
Chair, the chair.
Through the chair. Um, Mr. Russo, I, I missed out on some of the things you said. Can you repeat that? Because I'm writing it down. Master plan of the city water?
What did we?
Are you there? He's not there. Alright, I'll have to get in contact with him some other way. Thank you.
Did we have a connection problem?
No, yes, you, you, you cut out a couple of times during your talk. So if you can repeat what you said, that would be great.
Alright, I have two asks.
Yep.
The first is have the DPW create a master plan of city water projects and rank them by priority based on fire safety. And number two, appropriate the necessary funds, here's the budget, to conduct a deep water feasibility study to install fire hydrants and deep water connections to the residences and businesses on Rust Island.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Russo. We have a hand raised for Counsel Worthley, and I'm sure it's for a time issue.
No, that was a start and stop with all the councils asking questions. I just wanted for the record to have Mr. Russo's address. I don't know if he said it to start his presentation.
I am at 56 Yee Old County Road on Rust Island.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that being said, um, the city is working on this very hard, Mr. Russo. Um, we'll have more updates when the mayor comes back. Um, but this is more of an enterprise fund, not a budgetary situation. But they are working on this, and this is something that I look forward to happening. So with that being said, we're going to move on to our next person, and I see LJ.
Hi, thank you for, um, taking my questions. It's not for or against the budget. Just a general question in the introduction. Um, our mayor talks about the local fiscal recovery funds. But I'm really having a hard time understanding how they're allocated throughout this budget. Um, I don't see anything in the glossary that talks about grants or major funding making reference. I don't even know how they're received. Um, there's nothing in the glossary that makes mention of it. And, um, I don't really understand how that money shows in different areas. For example, um, 10 million to wastewater improvement and 3 million. I see obviously road paving and 3 million to road. But, um, as far as I'm aware, a lot of those funds are largely, uh, undistributed at this time. And, uh, I'm pretty sure they need to be allocated by the end of the year. So shouldn't they be showing up somewhere in this budget? And why can't I see, like, I, I would expect to see a major bump from last year to this year in wastewater infrastructure. But I don't see that. So what am I missing? Thank you.
Okay, can we have your name and address, please?
Oh, sorry, Lisa Riggsby, 3 Taylor Court.
Alright, Lisa, um, that's actually a really good question. And, um, if we have, uh, John Dunn online to answer that, that would probably be a great situation.
Alright, thank you, counselor, and thanks for the question. So basically, everything that may be coming into the city through a grant is not included in the general fund budget or the enterprise fund budgets, because they may not continue from year to year. Um, so again, the city council voted to accept, um, the ARPA money that was coming into the city. Um, and the mayor has been distributing that according to, um, the outlook that he presented and then coordinated, um, a number of months ago to decide how to spend that money. And if anybody wants to ask, you know, how it's distributed, that's fine, but that is not a part of the operating budget.
Excellent. Thank you, John. And does that answer your question?
I, not a, no. It doesn't. I mean, I'm not an accountant, and I understand that there, that, that, that the council voted to accept the funds. But that's such a large sum, I would assume that there would be reference to the funds, how they're distributed somewhere in this bud, in the budget. There's nothing. I mean, it's, it, the mayor has a whole paragraph dedicated to this in the beginning of the budget, and then it's just completely lost. It's just and like, where's that $10 million for wastewater? Like, how is that distributed?
Um, again, that's not a, a part of the actual budget that was separate, um, from what they're doing for allocations. I, I believe that the 10 million for wastewater is most likely going to a treatment plant of the upgrades. Um, I'll allow John to answer again one more time to your question.
Um, again, you know, this is a grant. Um, the city receives, you know, tens of million dollars of grants over the years that are not included in the operating budget. Um, so that's not the question before you tonight.
Through the chair?
Uh, Tracy O'Neill?
Is, is there a place that Ms. Riggsby can find that? That ARPA spending list? Whatever it's called.
Um, I believe that the ARPA money on, on the request what they're looking to do is on the city website. It's available. There is a plan for that. Um, you can find it if you don't have uh, any luck working with that. You can respond to the mayor's office. I believe they have a new phone number. I think um, is it three, five, one, zero, 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 one? I'm not sure if that's correct, but the, you can find it on the city's website. Net funded is totally separate from what the actual um. Uh, budget is and it, it is posted there. And if you have any questions. Um, you can reach out to us by email or by phone. Or you can call the mayor's office, but it, it is totally separate and you're in there and it is publicly uh, posted.
Um, I would appreciate if anybody knows the name of that document because I haven't been able to find like. A budget or allocation of funds except for what I just described as. Um. Paving and wastewater.
That's not a problem and um, we have gone over the three minutes, but I believe this is important information. Um, I can uh, put through or bring forward Jill Cahill. She can give you some phone numbers. And where you can call and where you can go on the city website. Jill, if you could, that'd be excellent.
I'm just thanking through the chair. I'm just gonna repeat that this is, it's not allocated funding and that it's not general operating funding. So it doesn't, you won't see a budget, but if you go to the mayor's page on the city website. You'll see several different areas where it's um, press releases and different um, subject matters and all the listening group. Um, input, you'll see all the, you'll see an entire documentation of everything we've heard from the public about it. And you can see the general outline of the spending and as um, funds are allocated. We'll be updating that website um, for what they're being spent, uh, how they're being spent, but. As of now, all the, any information that is available is on that website. City website, mayor's page slash ARPA. Um, please follow up, Lisa, you know how to reach the mayor's office, so please follow up. You know, on ARPA spending relative to that, that it's not in the operating budget, which is in front of them tonight.
LJ, does it help you?
Uh, thank you. I've read all of the published documentation, so um, thanks. I'll follow up off, offline. I appreciate your attention to this. To my question.
No, LJ, it was a great question and we really appreciate you coming forward. Um. We do have some hands up. Um, we have a couple of repeats. Um, Peg Russell is on there for, um, her hand is still raised. I'm not sure if that's a repeat or a follow-up question.
It's a follow-up question to just ask if on the ma- if on this year's budget, um, are there considerations for downtown improvement that would include sidewalk maintenance? You mentioned paving, um, lighting. Parking considerations, et cetera, because this is all around um, cause and effect for downtown businesses, specifically us retailers. Restaurants, et cetera, who are concerned not only just about the, you know, work I mentioned earlier, but in the bigger picture. What if any of this budget is being allocated for pres- you know, the cleanup, the DPW? Um, it's really messy downtown, so I just wanted to ask if that is, in fact. Are there line items that you can refer me back to, to review um, with all the other people I've spoken to?
Um, I would say there's no line items for that. It's uh, regular DPW maintenance. We can ask the administration. Um, if they'd like to, to call upon that. Um, if Jill would like to talk on that, that'd be up to her.
Much appreciated if you can.
Hi Peg, um, through, through the chair. Um, as the chair said again, tonight's question in front of city council is the general operating budget. It is not. The general operating budget doesn't, you will see an increase in paving. Um, that was maintained from last year. Within that, then it's the admini- it's up to the administration and the department to determine where that paving goes. It doesn't get outlined in the budget. But to speak specifically to your question, which is not relevant to the budget specifically. You will see, and it goes back to Lisa's, you will see if you review the ARPA, um, ARPA pages. We have, we've already allocated funding, uh, we're working on allocating funding related to a wayfinding program for downtown, a parking study for downtown. We have a, um, working group launched around a business and possible business improvement district or a downtown, um. A downtown management organization and the mayor is committed to doing the initial seed funding to that. Once the bit that downtown business owners and property owners. Um, have decided which direction they wanna go with that, so there's a. Significant investment in downtown. Um, in different areas of spending. We have multiple areas, but in front of you tonight, the council is the general operating budget. And it does not go into details like that. You'll see within economic development. They have, they have a block for funding an economic development project, but it's, you don't go to that level of detail in a general operating budget.
Thank you for addressing it. I appreciate that.
Excellent. Thank you, Jill. Um, with that being said, I don't see any other people with their hand raised for or opposed. So I would like to close up. We do have one. Uh, we have Gregory Doe, uh, Greg Caniaris.
Yeah, I can hear you. Sorry, go one more, Sean.
Um, that's not a problem, Greg.
A lot of notes have been taken about this. Um, just to go back, I know it's gonna be a little tangent. Um, Main Street and the Boulevard being such a mess. Um, National Grid doesn't come out and say, hey, we're gonna go work on Main Street this week. They plan that stuff out years in advance. And somewhere as in our budget, because it's budget related, is some city employee. Who makes the decision to approve National's grid to dig it up. Unless it's an emergency, of course, that's different. So they planned that out two or three years ago to dig up. Main Street and the Boulevard. On our four hundredth anniversary in the middle of the spring. Somebody in your bu- in the city's budget made a decision to say, hey, that's okay, go ahead, dig it up. And we'll pay for it. That's part of our budget. Right. Next thing is, where in our budget is the mayor and the DPW's discretionary fund? In past years, poof, money appears and all of a sudden roads are paved that service one house. Water lines are installed down streets that service retired DPW employees. We're out of twenty houses. Only five are hooking up. Where in the budget is that money? Where was that money? Um. Who approves this spending in the budget? Where is it in the budget? Who audits that stuff? The taxpayers deserve answers on this in our budget. I've been sitting on the website while everybody else isn't talking and this whole. Process is uh, must be frustrating for you all. Um, I couldn't find wherever you, the budget at all. Um, I saw something about eighty thousand dollars for vacant buildings. What is that number? Um. And the last thing I'll say before I go to a tangents is um. If this was your home, would you be spending this money like this? Would you be asking somebody to come in, hey, I got some, my grease, my trap in my. In my bathrooms. Plugged up. Well, you're the maintenance guy in your house, Sean. You'd fix it yourself. Where's the maintenance guy for three hundred thousand dollars to fix these things? It's all in the budget. I'm talking budget. Um, stops, the city should stop spending money like it's not their money. It is taxpayers' money. And it needs to be spent like it's your, our money. And not just say, it's not our money, it's just government money. Uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I really enjoyed the birds in the background. They sounded wonderful. Um, so we have, who hasn't spoke yet? Um, Pamela Steele.
Can you hear me?
We can, Pam.
Oh, good, because this is, I'm on my phone and I'm not a tucky. I have been on council meetings since two thousand eighteen. And every time there's a, a need for money, it's just rubber stamped. I'm kinda nervous because I have studied the demographics of our great city. Uh, and the second, and I don't think we have the money. We're bankrupting ourselves and it's scary. But I did wanna ask about money because I was on the creek meeting with Joe Cahill and the mayor and several other people. And my takeaway from the hundred and twenty thousand dollar. Uh, study was that we really have an, a pipe problem, an infrastructure problem with a hundred year old pipes. It's all over. Uh, New, New England. And I didn't see any money in the budget for that and that's a health and safety and a priority. Other than that, they don't seem to know what's going on with the creek. And I don't wanna have to spend another hundred and twenty. Let's get some money from pipes. I had recommended to the mayor. Do a, a phone call to his office that we get. Um, Bruce Tarny and Margaret here and get us the money just for infrastructure around our coastal areas because. They're precious and we really, that should be the top priority for spending as far as I'm concerned. And the spending of the city council, the school committee the other night horrified me as well because. It's documented that if you have a college education, you make a ton more money the rest of your life. And one council, which I will not mention names, even though now that the. Um, Massachusetts Civil Liberties Union, whoever said, we can say what we want. In saying that the test scores are okay because you can go into the military or you can be a plumber or you can be. Uh, whatever, but with the artificial intelligence coming, there are gonna be even fewer jobs and people are gonna have to have. More than one job in their lifetime is because things are changing so rapidly. So if you don't have a well-educated person in general who can jump from one thing to the other because they have a background. It's a crisis and it's not fair to them. We're the adults in the room and should prepare them better. Our scores are pathetic and you just give them money. You give money to the police station. Why is it all in the same year? The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the roof of the, the Rose Baker Center. The fifty million dollar windows at the O'Malley. Where does it end? I haven't done anything to my house in thirty years and I still work because that's what I do to pay the tax. So I'm just horrified. I like you guys. I'm, I feel like you're family. I'm on these meetings. But I really don't think you're representing me, to tell you the truth, on any issue I've ever brought up before you. That school is ridiculous and I could go on for three hours about why. And I tried hard to fix it and it didn't go anywhere. So, but thank you for listening. I appreciate it. These are questions I've asked of. I wanted to ask for a long time, but now that you said I could speak, I took an opportunity. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Pam, and have a great night. Um, we do have one other person with a hand up. Um, she has spoken before. Uh, Jane uh, Fox Dobson, is this gonna be on something different on the motion in front of us? Jane, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
I, we can, Jane.
Okay, well, you're talking about budget. I did have concerns because back in May, weeks ago. You were no- the mayor was notified, you were notified and I was notified by Sandra La- that we had a. Out of service fire hydrant on Concord Street. It's been out for over six weeks. And I sent in ma- and we received an email from Mayor Verga saying.
Right, Jane, Jane, I gotta stop you on this. It's not budget related.
Some fire safety.
No, the fire, the fire hydrant was damaged by a car. That's up with insurance reasons right now. Um, that's not budget related. Um, as much as I will talk to you about it after this meeting or anytime tomorrow. Um, that doesn't have anything to do with the budget in front of us tonight.
Or fire safety and fire hydrants? For the future?
Uh, they, they do, they do. They do, but that, that particular fire hydrant was, was damaged by a, a vehicle accident. And we're working on it.
But in the budget, when are you gonna put safety as the priority? When is safety gonna be the priority? The house here in Gloucester don't have fire hydrants and we're gonna burn up. But you can spend a hundred, three hundred thousand dollars on grease traps. And seventy-five thousand dollars on boating machines when we don't even have safety out here.
All right, Jane, Jane, we already talked about this at the beginning. The seventy-five and the three hundred is a separate agenda that's put out to budget and finance. Um, so uh, if you have any questions actually on the budget that's in front of us from the mayor's report. That's what we're looking at tonight.
Fire safety and fire hydrants. Where's the infrastructure budget?
The infrastructure budget is, is part of the DPW and the fire hydrants are maintained by a full-time employee, so. Um, at this point, um, I will give you a call and talk to you about this, but it has nothing pertaining tonight in front of us.
Okay. It just sounds.
Sorry, thank you. All right, so I don't see any other hands in front of us, so I will close the public hearing. Um. Is there any written communications?
Yes. Um, we received the written communication and I forwarded it to the. City council last week from Pauline Breznerhand, five twelve Essex Avenue. Asking the city council to make an effort to urge the city department heads to cut. Make cuts in their budget and also not to um. Increase the school budget.
Excellent. Thank you. Madam Clerk, uh, and now we'll open it up for questions from counselors. And I don't see any. Uh, Counsel O'Neil. You're muted.
Thank you. I just had to find my notes. Um. So regarding uh, what Pauline Breznerhand said, I agree with her that we should not be increasing the school budget. Um. I just. Part of the budget says it includes a new track in the vocational education program. What is that? Do the Volk students have a track? Where is it? Where is it?
It's not a physical track as in a running track. It's a track having to do with an educational track. You're adding vocational programs in order to make it a complete. Uh, certified vocational program.
Okay.
It's not for exercise.
Okay, understood. Uh, I'm still not in favor of increasing that budget. Um, in the emergency management section. Who is the director? The director has an assistant. It's under general funds expenditures. On the uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the, the last item on the page. Budget for emergency management includes funding for a full-time assistant to support the director's efforts. Who's the director of the emergency management?
Uh, for the city of Gloucester would be Chief Eric Smith.
Okay, so he has a, a full-time assistant.
I can, I can't answer that question.
Okay, to um, act as a citywide compliance officer for DLS and OSHA and safety-related issues. He's the guy. And he has a full-time assistant. Okay. Um, I have some more, the um.
Actually, Tracy, is there anybody else that has any questions before Tracy continues? No other questions. Tracy, you can continue.
All right, thank you. Um. I'll wait on that one. The Water Enterprise Fund is increased by ten percent. That's quite a bit. I think that's a bit much. Um, the Sewer Enterprise Fund is increased by six percent. Plus we're given a hundred thousand dollars in free cash, so I, I understand we're trying, okay? But ten percent increase in, in our water bill is, is too much. Is just too much. Um, the Talbot Enterprise, the Talbot Rink. Enterprise Fund, the Talbot Rink should be making money, not losing money. So I don't know how to fix that either, but. It, it's definitely an important part of Gloucester for sure, okay? But it should be making money. It should not be losing money. Um. The, I have two more really tough questions, I think. The Waterways Enterprise Fund. Um, has an increase of twenty percent, nineteen point seven nine percent. That's like twenty percent increase. This increase is due to an increase in compensation for. This increase is due to an increase in compensation for assistant harbor master. Um, how many assistant harbor masters do we have? Okay, the last time I asked the harbor master TJ Schimintaro, how many assistant harbor masters we had, he said eight. I think that's a bit much. My own opinion, I don't think a twenty percent increase is sustainable or necessary. I think that's way too high. Second question about the Waterways Enterprise Fund, why does the entire city not benefit from the income of our harbor? Why does the Waterways Enterprise Fund, why is that its own little entity? Uh, the harbor belongs to the whole city. The whole city should reap the benefits of what it brings in, especially if it's bringing in a lot of money.
All right, Tracy O'Neill, I'd like to stop you there for one second, and I can see that Tony Gross has got a smile on his face. And, uh, Tony, would you feel free to explain the Waterways Board, the Enterprise Fund? Or do you want to leave it at, it, what it is?
Uh, I can explain that the assistants are part-time, no benefits. Okay, so, and you have to, um, man, uh, two people, seven days a week for four months. That for part-time, you have to have, if you don't want to get into full-time, you have to have a certain amount of, uh, of bodies to be able to do that. Otherwise, it gets far more expensive. So that's one of the reasons. Um, none of this is on the taxpayer, by the way. So this is all brought in by fees on, um, either visitors or mooring holders.
And fishermen, right?
And no fishermen.
Didn't the fishermen-
None, zero.
Through the chair?
Zero.
Didn't you, didn't the fishermen's, uh, they got increased over this, this past year? They got an increase to their, to something. I'm sorry, I can't-
Oh, oh, on the, on the, on the, the marinas?
Yeah.
Yes, they got a very-
And that money, that goes into the enterprise fund as well, so-
Because the, because the enterprise fund is in charge of maintaining it, not the city.
Right, so it's not all tourist money. It's fishermen's money too.
Well, that's about, um, it's maybe five percent of that budget. Not even, I don't, I'd have to look at the numbers, but it's not, it's, it's not a lot of money. It's, it's, um, trying to think of it, was it twenty-five thousand dollars a year per marina? So that's not even five percent. Um, so it, uh, it, it, it's not, um, they're, they're still paying a, a, we reduced the fee that they wanted to increase. They're still paying a reasonable dockage fee for what they get at I four C two. They have private parking spaces. They're about to get a twenty thousand dollar. Um, they're not even, their annual rents are not even gonna pay for the amount that it's gonna cost to give them their, their new hoist. St. Peter's, you don't have a hoist because there's no space to put it because of the public parking lot that is there.
Right. And I would argue that the increase, I would argue that they're paying for the hoist, but they've been paying for twenty years and not getting anything.
They've had that hoist. The hoist just broke. It's being replaced this year. They've had that hoist all along.
Right, but that's a, that's an old hoist. It's, they've been paying for ten, twenty years all along and not getting much for it, is what I'm saying. That's not what we should be talking about really right now, but, but it's kind of like when the oil company told me that I needed a new oil tank, right? And I said, well, um, I pay, um, I pay a, uh, fee every year, I feel, you know, to, for a free tank if my tank ever leaks. And then they said something about, well, they took the oil out of my tank. And I go like, what'd you do with my oil? They said, well, you got a free tank. It's like, nobody get a free tank. I've been paying oil barrel insurance for, or tank insurance for twenty years. So they-
Um, we're, we're getting, we're getting off topic. I mean, this is a little bit of a topic.
I, I don't know what to say about that, but it, it just doesn't, it doesn't, it's not apples to apples on that one. They're, they're getting a dock space at a reasonable rate, and that's what they're getting.
Right, so-
So is there, is there any other questions, um, from any of the counselors? I don't see any other questions.
Amy's raising her hands.
Uh, Council O'Hara.
So I raised, uh, at the, um, fire, fire department, they have in their budget, um, Chief Smith mentioned a seventy thousand dollar new position for OSHA compliance. Um, he later called me to explain that he's, he's been asked by the administration to take on all OSHA compliance for the city. Uh, I, I just feel that we, we just employed a few years ago, an assistant fire chief had a significant pay increase as well as an assistant police chief at a significant salary, um, to install a, another position within the ranks of the fire department, even though he, he's saying he's absorbing this for the entire city, I think.
Mr. President.
Counsel Gro.
Are, I, I, are we in questions or are we in deliberations?
Uh, we, we weren't questions, and I was just gonna say that most of these questions should have been asked at committee level, at Budget and Finance. Um, if any counselor has a question tonight on the actual budget, I would hope that they have asked that through the ample time with Scott Memhard and Budget and Finance to do this, um, research. Um, so, uh, we are, I've been doing a short leash on everybody tonight. Um, just trying to get things out, but in all fairness, um, the questions that I'm hearing-
This was asked at the budget review.
Right, if it was a budget review, was it answered?
I understand, but still, we still see that money in the budget.
But was it answered?
What's that?
Was it answered at budget review?
Uh, uh, to my liking, no. I mean, and the, the, the question, the question obviously can come up with an answer. Is it acceptable? That's subjective. Is it acceptable to whom? I mean, we're representing the, the taxpayers, and they're, they're hard-earned tax dollars. And I'm standing up, but I feel that that position, installing another position is, is, is just not-
Mr. President.
Let's find another way to make it quiet.
So we're, we're, we're deliberating, not asking questions, so I'm gonna move on to the firsthand raise. That's Council Majota.
I'm, I don't have a question more of a comment. If, if you're not speaking, can you be on mute? There's a lot of feedback that I'm getting, and it's interrupting those who are speaking. Thank you.
Excellent. Counsel Gro.
I, I was just getting back to my point of order. There is an opportunity for any counselor to make amendment to motions as we go through the budget voting. This is a, this is not, this is not the time to be deliberating about what you think should or shouldn't be in the budget. It's about finding out clarifications. If you want to make an amendment next Tuesday night, by all means, raise your hand, and then we can vote on it.
Excellent. So, um, at this point, without any objection, I'd like to take a two-minute recess, and this will be by roll call vote. Sorry, Joanne.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Um, Council Gilman is not with us as a counselor. Uh, Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Gro.
Sure thing.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memhard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
And Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna take a two-minute recess.
Thanks.
Excellent. So, um, we're going through council questions, and I gave a two-minute recess uh, for people to reflect a little bit on, on questions that, that could have been answered at, um, Budget and Finance. Is there any other questions tonight, um, that weren't answered? Or not seen, weren't answered, but not to your liking? But, uh, questions that you want to ask that you don't know the answers for, that you have the opportunity to hear, um, before we adjourn. Counsel O'Neill.
This may seem a little ridiculous, but if we're not, if we can't ask questions and deliberate, what are we doing here? Why are we here?
Um, we can ask questions, and that's what it's all about, is asking questions. Uh, deliberating is for the actual meeting when we go through the budget to vote, and that's when we'll be able to deliberate. But for tonight, it's questions.
Okay.
Counsel, Counsel Nolan.
Counsel Memhard.
Yeah, through the chair, uh, C- Counsel O'Neill, I mean, we, we, we paid great effort to make sure that all of our Budget and Finance Committee meetings were committees of the whole, so all counselors were invited to participate in the questions and to go each line item and line item, department by department, through the entire budget over the course of three, two, two full days, and then uh, uh, an evening, and those were recorded and available for your review. Um, if you couldn't come during the day, you could certainly have submitted other questions to us. Um, but the, the, the point of those, th- those meetings was to, was to do just the sort of thing that, that you, uh, seemed to be asking, because I, I think they were pretty clearly all addressed and discussed and thrashed out. And we had the opportunity for the department heads, uh, to present their budgets and defend them and explain the process that they've gone through trimming them, uh, in the course of negotiations with the, the mayor and CA O Cahill and John Dunn. So, a- again, the time for that really shouldn't be now. It, it should have been back through the entire process of the last month. That, uh, the Budget and Finance Committee and a few, a few of other counselors, uh, spent a great deal of time, um, participating in so that we could flesh those out and, and get a real clear understanding. All of us, uh, what was involved in the city's operating budget. That's the, the contracts of our staff. That's the, uh, routine maintenance in the departments and the acquisition of specific services, uh, contractual or otherwise, um, within each of the city's departments.
Okay, so, uh, it's my fault. I do work during the day. I haven't, I have not had time to review all the hours that you spent, and I know you spent a lot of hours on it, so I, I do appreciate it. I don't want to sound unappreciative. I'm just work during the day, and I work early mornings and late evenings and whatnot. Um, so I was hoping to ask questions here tonight and have discussions. Cause I don't-
The questions that you can ask, well, y- you may ask, but, uh, deliberating, um, we cannot do, because it's not in front of us to vote on this matter. Um, I will move on to a few other people, uh, Counsel O'Neill. Uh, Counsel Worthley did have his hands up, and then after Counsel Worthley, we'll have Counselor Gross.
Thank you, uh, President Nolan. Um, I understand this, the, sort of the uncertainty of the public hearing process, which is really for us to take the input and have questions asked. Whether they get answered right now or before we vote, that's a different story, but I, I think that there's only one question, two questions I'd like to ask. As a member of Budget and Finance, um, we work really hard on this. This isn't a, a surprise move. It's just something that I've been wondering. Is it possible? It doesn't need to be for this budget. But I would like to be able to have a better grasp of our long-term debt, our short-term debt, and where that's headed, because obviously every decision we make is affecting taxpayers now and in the future. And it's sort of one of those things where I can dig into some audit document that I maybe can't find very easily, but I'm just wondering, can that number be provided to us? What's our short-term debt situation? What's our long-term debt situation? When are those debts gonna be paid off? And what is our borrowing capacity? That's something I've been like, wanting to get for a while. And then the second question, just a really request, I think, um, our city charter requires that with every city budget, um, submission, a list of all of the city employees are provided at the council, and we got that last year. Uh, I don't think we've got that yet this year, so I just want to, um, remind the administration to provide that to us. Out of questions that go beyond what we asked at the, uh, Budget and Finance meetings, though. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Counsel Worthley, Counsel Gross.
Yeah, Counsel Worthley started making the point, uh, tonight is about hearing from the public. This is the public hearing. Not, um, and then we get to discuss it again, um, after this public hearing, after hearing the input from the public and, but that's what, tonight's all about the public telling us what they think of this.
Excellent. So with that being said, is there any other council questions? All right, hearing none, then I'd like to call a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I got.
And this will be by roll call vote. Um, sorry, Joanne.
It's okay. Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman is not with us as a counselor tonight. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Gro.
Yes, please.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
And Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
The motion passes. Be in favor, one absent.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody, for being with us tonight. Thank you for your patience. My first time running a meeting, uh,
Great job, Sean.
I was trying to be lenient to let people speak. I respect everyone's opinion, uh, more especially of my colleagues. So I wish you all a great night, and we'll talk soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, Sean.